No, it's a good idea.
All right, we're back.
All right, we were talking about the changes, potential changes in the prior subdivision from the purchaser, which from past experience, I don't believe that there's an issue. What you need to do is to look at your subdivision, your lot, research that and see if there are any conditions placed on any further subdivision. May, may not be there. If there are none, I don't think the board has the standing to make a decision. Otherwise, it would just be a matter of drawing up, having the survey made, legal description change, altering your deed or making an added deed to the registry of deeds, as well as the purchaser. So your deed would say, you know, part of this, except they're nearing that portion, yada, yada, transfer it on this date to so and so, recording your kind of registry deeds.
That's clear as much.
Clear as much.
Now, does the subdivision, that is recorded in the registry of deeds, right, as well as the individual parcels? But the subdivision itself is going through a change? So that would have to be another document.
Well, if it was eighty-three, would that even be recorded?
Oh, I would think so.
It should be.
It should be. I've gone back to like eighteen hundreds and subdivisions when they had, fifty by hundred lots and someone buy a dozen lots. But because they're legal lots of record, yes. So being nineteen eighty-three would not make, and I'm surprised, I don't know.
So that would require two subdivision modifications.
And that's easy enough to do is go on York County Registry of Deeds, plans, and just type in under a word search, Edith Goodwin Estates. And that should bring you right up, see if there is any of that. They should be the plans as well as a link to any documentation or restrictions.
Okay, I think we can do that.
All right, well, hopefully we were informative and not totally distracted you or dissuaded you.
I have a question.
Yes, Rebecca.
So are you saying, to my understanding, for the record, that it's not required to do a formal application for a subdivision amendment because it's just a lot line?
As with the other one that we're looking at, if there's no restrictions, one of these subdivisions goes back to eighty-three, I believe the other one goes back to like the sixties? The one you're talking about, the one that you're part of? If there's any restrictions on it that says they can't, then one would presume that they can. If they are allowed to do further subdivisions, and there's no homeowners association mandatory membership or fees, how can we do anything to say? What are our, where's our authority to make, jump through hoops that aren't there? Just because there's a subdivision and a subdivision. They're established, they've been there thirty years, forty years. With the other proposed subdivision that we looked at, I don't know how many years ago, it would have been fine for them to break off that parcel because the subdivision didn't have any restrictions on any further subdivision. Unless something comes up that says, you know, no further subdivision, then it'd have to be a legal matter, then it'd have to come to us, they'd have to be, all the owners would have to get involved and sign off on it. So if, yes.
Mr. Chairman, seven point seven, plan revisions after approval in the land development and subdivision standards.
Seven seven. Did you want to read it since you broke it up?
No changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made in any final plan after approval has been given by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plan, unless the plan is first resubmitted and the planning board approves any modifications. In the event that a final plan is recorded without complying with this requirement, the same shall be considered null and void. And the planning board shall institute proceedings to have the plan stricken from the records of the municipal offices, officers in the registry of deeds. So this, this, both of these subdivisions are recorded with the, at the registry of deeds. So my assumption, I don't know, I'm reading this as any changes to this has to be recorded, has to be approved by the planning board and recorded. You're, you're changing the layout of a subdivision.
I hear you. Boy. And it does not give a timeline.
And we, we just did one. With, there was a subdivision amendment that was made in order for the Carlisle, is it the Carlisle Brook? Or even Carlisle Brook, I think. There was a, an amendment to, not that subdivision, that was a new one, but we had.
Harper had amended.
Was it Harper? Right.
For the new roadway to go through one of the lots.
That's, yes. So we went through the process to amend that subdivision. So I don't see, I know it's, it's not a big change, but I think we still have to do this.
I think this is one for legal counsel to step in because if, think of all these small lots on water bodies that have two or three or four lots and they want to split off a parcel to their neighbor to allow so much, and that subdivision is from nineteen fifty-four. When is enough enough?
Well, I guess we could go by the date when was the land development and subdivision standards initiated?
It was amended.
It was amended, earliest amendment date was two thousand and four, but we'll have to research that.
I thought I'd made it easy for you. Major change. We revise, we review and revise in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. But we don't have the date of initial.
Does the regular zoning address, zoning ordinance address subdivisions?
It probably says C subdivision, land development subdivision standard. Thoughts and opinions, Kevin?
I can say from personal experience, I, I live in a subdivision that was started back in about the same timeframe, early eighties. I had three lots and one of those lots was about fifty acres. And over the years, multiple, up to five or six lots, including my own, had been split off legally over periods of five years to not go through subdivision review, which are all changes to the original subdivision plan without coming back to the planning board.
Tim?
I'm with our initial thoughts. As long as there's nothing in the subdivision on either subdivision requirements or restrictions, that it could move forward.
No?
Yeah, I, I agree with Tim and I hear what Kevin has to say and everybody. It, it's like you would almost think a subdivision has a lifespan of certain number of years. And after that timeframe goes by, they become individual lots.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good point. So where, where is the cutoff?
What is a reasonable and practical expectation for the?
I would, if I was going to hazard a guess, I'd say twenty-five years.
This exceeds that by fifteen.
I understand. I remember Edith Goodwin.
Also, there's a, I mean, the newest subdivisions now are required to have homeowners association documents, legal documents. So you don't have a homeowners, an HOA, no. So that, that's something that should be in the, in our ordinance, you know, a cutoff time because.
One of the things I was actually just reading today from the main municipal association planning board handbook and all that is when that there is no specific statute or guidance. It is kind of encumbered upon the planning board to use their best judgment. And I wish I had it printed or underlined. And this actually is one of those cases, I think it falls exactly into place, where when is it, when is it reasonable? It's not like it's a new subdivision that has ten acre parcels with an encumbrance saying, oh, we have approved this with limitations, restrictions due to lot size and topography and wetlands. It's been there forty years.
So if they originally were, had to be five acre lot size, I'm assuming that would have been the requirement when that was done. And it's changed to three acre, I would think that opens the door to make some changes.
That is my question on your deed, because you are five acres. Is your deed restricted to five acres?
In the subdivision.
In the subdivision. The ones across are all eight, ten, twelve, fourteen acres. Well, the smallest one in that is five point seven, ten point seven, ten point five, ten point nine, ten, ten acres, eight point four.
That might be a good question to ask the attorney, which direction we should be looking.
Yeah. Because if, if the, if your subdivision is encumbered by a five acre lot, where, do you have a good image of the zoning ordinance, of the zoning map you can quickly bring up?
I do not because my battery just went dead.
Rebecca to the rescue. Yeah, because if, if you're in the zone that requires five acres, we can't help you. If you're in, when it is three acres, because Cecile brought up a good point, that Swan Brook on that subdivision says it's short land zoning and general purpose. General purpose is five acres. So that's all three acres?
Yep.
Then why does part of it say general purpose on the survey, which, great, the survey is from eighty-three?
The residential district did not exist back then. It's been added to this end.
So that's interesting.
Yeah, that whole portion of Swan Pond on this one here from the code enforcement officer, official. State's residential, so you are three acres. I'd look into deed restrictions. And if there are none, I don't think there's a problem doing the legal split.
I look it up, I get an answer, how do I close the loop?
How do you go to the loop? You guys write up your legal descriptions from your attorney and you transfer it over.
Run it by Rebecca.
Yep.
Code enforcement.
There's another potential possibility for you. You ever heard of a life estate? Life estate is, has, you can write it up so that you have the right to reside in your home and things will be taken care of, where you'll be expected to pay minimal till the day you die, but you get a lump sum of money. At time of death, depending on how it's written up, property is transferred over to the one that grants the life estate.
Where's the catch?
What's that?
Where's the catch?
The catch is, is the person buying the land does not have all the exclusive use of it. So they couldn't tear down your house. But upon your passing or your inability to maintain occupancy in the residence, they would take possession of the property.
We had already discussed the possibility of him buying my entire property and that was outside of his ability to do.
Just see if you have deed restrictions.
That's, that's.
If there's none there, you're pretty clear.
Thank you.
Good luck. Hope everything works out for you. I can still see people moving background for a little bit.
That's a good deal.
Yes, it is. Yes. Yes, it is. Subdivision, this, 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 this. Could we have Ryan Dankos, seventeen thirteen Alfred Road map, seven lot sixty-four?
Did you want to take your coffee, Bill?
Yeah, if you have one. Please and thank you. I don't know why the battery's, it shouldn't be. Thank you.
Could you introduce yourself and tell the board what you would like to do?
Yeah, I'm Ryan Dankos. I live over Dayton on eighty-five Gould Road. We, my wife and I, Emily, purchased this property about a year and a half ago on Alfred Road, one eleven. We are looking to do a commercial contractor rental space. So plumbers, electricians, small businesses need a garage with a small office and a bathroom to house equipment or supplies or whatever, place from them, for them to leave. These are taken off, we've been calling them garage amenities for the past couple of years, but they're taken off down the Saco Bitterford area. And I think that would be a really good spot for it over there. It's good, clear sight. It's, it's on one eleven, which is a great spot. So we have eight point something acres there. We're looking to do two six unit buildings, which are the two longer rectangles you see there.
Yep.
We have a house currently on the property my son lives in. He, the driveway for that house will get removed because we have all of our DOT permits for driveway openings, line of sight, traffic studies. We've done all of it so far. So the driveway will end up getting moved to the other side of, of the house. Eventually, the plan is because we don't meet setbacks currently, if you look at the bottom of the property line where the entrance to that road is, there's an actual jog in the property line because one eleven, when they came in, they had to move it around the house where they widened it. So the house is very close to the road. That being said, my plan in the future would be to demolish the house. After the six, after the twelve units are often built and running, we're going to do like a phase two and we're planning on removing the house and putting some office space in that, that little building that's the smaller building closer to the road. We are limited on some of our types of businesses we can put in there, like a hair salon we can't do because of perk tests and the amount of water a hair salon would use. So we would, we would never be able to do that in that office space. It would literally be an accountant or a lawyer, an engineer, something like that. Low water, low volume traffic, low, you know, just low impact type businesses. We're going to own and manage it. We have rentals already in Lyman. So we're kind of familiar to the game, more of a residential side. This will be more commercial. And basically, yeah, build it and hopefully they come.
Can you elaborate on the gravel storage area with the chain link fence?
So I see that the amount of storage units out there in the world are going crazy. Every corner, it seems like there's more storage units. But there's not enough storage for like boats and RVs, the big stuff. And I'm looking at an area that we're planning on trying to fence that in, gate it with a key code. So winter storage of boats, people can wrap their boat, back it in there, park it, leave it, in the spring, come get it, that type of thing. We're not going to actually, we're not planning on running any type of business out there. It's just parking for storage. And then vice versa, if one of the contractors that's there has a trailer or an added something, I don't know, an excavator that they use for ditching or something, I don't know. They can park it back there and rent more space for me. So we're trying, we're going to limit, the parking spots are not for parking equipment and things like that. We want to keep a clean front to that. So, you know, employee pulls in, they get in their work van, they leave. The car will stay parked in front of the building. At night, the work van goes in the bay, the car leaves. That's the theory behind it. That's, so any auxiliary equipment or supplies would go in that gravel area for my renters.
How much traffic flow was a DOT looking at?
What did they say for Saco? What do we add? We had a, there's two different Saco projects like this. And one's right on Route one in front of, it used to be Frank Gallo's. And that project went in and we use their traffic study numbers because that's a much higher volume traffic than we have here on one eleven. And they, they said we're so far under the, where they were worried about, we would be like, I don't know what it was, we were talking like half or a third.
Eighteen weekday AM trips and which is really small, and twenty-nine PM trips.
And they've looked at line of sight.
Yeah, yeah, we have the permit. We have the driveway permit from DOT.
Yeah, we worked with DOT quite a long time. So they're a regional traffic engineer. We submitted, we hired Barton and LaChuva's Traffic Engineers. So we did site distance, they did driveway separation, they looked at safety, they looked at all our tricks. We submitted as much information.
So this is kind of like Wyndham Industrial Park off three oh two.
I don't know where that is. Wyndham Industrial Park off three oh two?
You know where the golf, mini golf course is with the big A-frame? Then you go past and there's a little log cabin up on the right-hand side. You sneak around, there's four, six buildings I helped build back in the eighties.
No, I never noticed it in there.
Is it still standing?
Well, yes, it is. It was home of Wyndham, Wyndham weaponry and owned by Dick. God built these things. One of the things I'm looking at this, we put an ordinance on commercial, particularly along the corridor for harmonious design standards. So that we don't get row after row after row of cookie cutter.
Of course.
I did see that you put out a cute little opposing little porch.
Yep. So that's a very, it's not rudimentary, but it's the basic drawing for you to see. The sizes and everything. I have, once, if, when we push through and get this going, I'll have more for her.
More detailed plans and all that.
But my plan, looking at that more and more, I was planning on doing a, that's a, I think it's about a six foot roof in the front of those unit doors. And I'm planning on running a six foot curb and sidewalk and tip down in front of each garage door so that we don't have to have the stupid bump stops, you know, that are always in the way for plowing and all that. So we'll run that down and then we're thinking about if you look at the way that is designed, we have room for a sign for each business over the roof. So that's kind of what we were thinking. We put lighting in there. So each business has their own little sign. We can change them out pretty easy, standard size, you know, nothing crazy big. We are, I also was thinking about doing some sort of a stone veneer type thing at the bottom of two to three feet up, like a chair rail almost in a room, but outside.
Outside, a little static or something.
Yeah, just something. And the corner unit towards one eleven, we were going to shift the layout a little bit. I think I'm going to try to move the office on the corner and then do like a double glass. So when you drive in, you'll see like a wrapped around even in that front.
So you're, yeah, you're just oncoming office, you'd have exterior windows.
Yeah, if you have a, like a textile person that's doing design and stuff, they can, it's more presentable to drive up to it, I believe, that way. But like an electrician or whatever doesn't care about the back, like stick him in the back unit, you know?
The electrician or plumber that concerned, the office and when they go in, do they have a big enough bathroom?
Yeah, exactly.
Are you thinking slab on grade and a wood structure or?
Yeah, no, it'll be a wood structure. I talked to Marcel about it already. I've talked to the code enforcer about it. We're going to do wood frame. We're going to do probably a metal siding, two-tone or the, the, it doesn't show it on there. He showed vinyl, but vinyl on a building that big is not an issue, not.
Bad idea.
It, it looks like this, you know, when it's done. So we're thinking about doing vertical metal siding, metal roofing, we'll two-tone it. We're going to play with colors, things like that to see, make it look right. I want to attract people, not keep them away, and I don't want this to turn into a dump, so. We're going to be on.
You're going to say a steel frame?
If you know my, if you see my house, you'll see, we're pretty particular about trying to keep things neat, so. And we carry through to this too.
I was going to say, you could probably save the construction cost going with a steel building, then doing a vinyl.
I've already done the pricing on both sides and you can't, but you can't build it cheaper if you build it yourself. I can build it, I can build it myself. We do excavation for a living. We actually just did the town dump last year for you guys. So we, we do excavation, so we'll do the whole ground up. We have crews to do it all, so wood is the way to go for me, cost-wise, so.
You're going to say time-wise, steel crew?
You're right, but the other side of that is electrical, there's a lot more money in a steel building. Insulation is not as good as a steel building, so I've outweighed all that. Would, that's why, that's another big reason why we went forty, not fifty. If we went fifty on the building, the cost is a lot more money for those trusses.
Oh, yeah. Because that was the thing I noticed when you go with the five twelve and like.
Yeah, yeah. It's just to keep it so it's not towering in there. I, with only a forty foot wide building, if we went to like a seven or an eight, then I worry about snow coming down in those, on those door areas, so.
Especially on wood.
Yeah, yeah.
So you've done a hundred and eighty foot clearance.
Yeah, that's, that's a big truss. That's, or is it metal? Steel, yeah. Yeah.
The Kepler factory in, in Bitterford.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I know it well.
Built it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like great. Do we want to go through the checklist?
So the parking places are not going to be for subcompact cars, park the dump truck in it?
So that's what we're, this, the next scenario we're talking about is the horse, the horse track there. We, we did that because we wanted to drain all the water into the middle, into the grass area. And you might like mowing grass for a living, but I don't. We're changing the plan a little bit and we ran into, not, we didn't run into it, but there's some wetland to the left. If you look at the left side of the Todd's point to it. So, so that was, that building was going to be in the wetland and it was going to cause a much bigger project for all of us with Army Corps engineers and all this other stuff. I don't, we're not doing that. We're going to get rid of the horse track in the middle. We're going to shrink it down, bring the parking lot in tighter, which still puts us way under impervious surface stuff. All of the drainage is going to work really good. We have in the bottom right-hand corner of the property, I'm assuming you guys know Leo. That's the Apple Orchard that's next to Leo's house. So Leo's right here, Leo.
Rule?
Rule. So this is going to be a wet pond.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
The blue house?
Yep, yep.
That's the part, we cut the whole thing?
Yep.
Everyone was like, what the hell?
That's pretty much what is a little compass is what you've already cleared.
Correct. It won't go any bigger than that. Yeah. We, we can't go any further back because that actual, see how the property line is in an angle back there? There's a stream back there that is, we're so far away from it now and I just don't need to go back there. There's no reason to. But that pond on the way in, the plan is to put in a fire hydrant. So I've spoke to, which Ben Harris, you guys must know him. He's like, definitely a hundred percent, we'd take it in a minute if we could, if you could give us an actual hydrant in that pond. So we have to provide a pond anyway for the surface water runoff and, and treatment. So why not? It's better for me, it's better for you guys, it's better for the pipe, the fire department. We're just going to put it in. So why not? It's better for me, it's better for you guys, it's better for the pipe, the fire department. We're just gonna put it in, so. Uh, that'll be accessed off of my main access road because. That pond, if you, I don't know if you, you'll see it now, but when you go down one eleven, it's actually in about an eight-foot. Embankment there, so the pond will sit up in that embankment and you'll access, you'll come into my driveway to hook into that hydrant. If need be. So that's kinda where we're at with it. Power-wise, everyone, I don't know, everyone's gonna have their own meters, their own propane meters, everything, everyone's gonna pay their own utilities.
Then no one there is gonna require two twenty, correct? Twenty-three phase.
No, no three-phase. No, it'll all be, it'll all be, uh, just normal power. Hundred amp services for each unit so that they can run, you know, whatever, whatever they need to run, small equipment.
So are you proposing no fire suppression system?
I, from what I've talked to the fire department so far, I spoke to her about, I can't remember the name. Rebecca, I'm sorry. So I spoke to Rebecca. There was no need for it because no one's living there. So if, if it was that big of a building with that many units, you would need fire suppression, but in this situation, from what I'm gathering. No, not even the fire department cares about it because at this point, it's not, it's not needed. There's no one living there. They leave at night. There should be no one there at night in, in retrospect, unless like a crew's coming home late or something.
My concern about that is when we go down to, on the last checklist, item fifteen. Makes adequate provision for transportation, storage and disposal. And this is page seven of seven on your. Uh, disposal hazard substance materials. You guys, if you're having plumbers and electricians, contractors, you don't know what they could be. Storing in those vehicles, taking them out, putting them in the shop.
Right.
Oily, greasy rags, spontaneous combustion.
Yeah.
Uh, and next door, you happen to have someone who has. Unto themselves, it's a very stable product that they're selling. But when they get an ignition source. I would prefer to see sprinkler systems. Uh, it's just something. From my experience in passing, construction was always favorable. And it also probably cut down on the insurance cost.
Yeah, yeah. So who, is that, is that under code? Under something like this, or is that under the fire department? Who do I talk to? Cause I'll, I'll do the research. If we, if we have to have it, we'll have it, but.
That would fall under, unless there's something saying specifically not, it would be a condition imposed upon by the planning board.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
And it's logical.
It makes sense. It makes sense. It's a very expensive make sense though. So I know.
In the grand scheme of things, it's not.
Okay, I'll look into it. I haven't priced it yet, so we'll see how it goes with that. And, and once again, I will. If it's required, we have to do it, we'll do it. There's no doubt, there's no doubt about that. Truth.
You can have any tenant you want.
Right.
And on the, about the pond, the pond does not exist now.
No.
It's gonna create a runoff.
Correct.
I mean, we talk about excess water from all the rain, but what if we have a drought?
Uh, we're lining the pond with rubber. So the, the pond should be about seven or eight feet deep from what we were talking about. Water level, water depth, total depth would be hovering right around five feet all the time. So if someone were to fall in that pond, they can still get out to the side because it's sloped. It's, you know, it's not just a cliff, it's, it's a sloped pond. So. Uh, there'd be an outlet control structure on one end of it, which would manage the water flow. So if we did have super hard rains. And all of that pavement and all of that stuff would be white water rapids, we'll say, running into that pond. That outlet control structure will slow the water down and then release it slowly. Cause there's a culvert right there that runs under one eleven. So we, we obviously are not gonna replace that culvert because it's one eleven. But he's, he has all the calculations figured out to make it run slow and then keep it at bay. That being said, if we have a severe drought and that pond goes dry, there's gonna be a lot bigger problems because that's a lined pond. It shouldn't go anywhere.
Okay.
But, yeah.
It just carries help.
Yeah.
Are you gonna redo the plans to show the changes?
We, we have, we didn't submit them to you guys in the beginning because this just came up literally Thursday, or, uh, Monday. So he's been drawing this. Today and yesterday to, to get it done. So this, we will submit this new plan.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just thinking, cause if we approve this, then you're gonna have to make a change down the road.
Approve what? Horse track, you mean?
Yeah, so, so if this is what you're submitting, that's what we're gonna be going by. And then we have to have a public hearing and then you can make changes after that.
I see.
So the sooner they're done and we do the initial with the changes, the better.
Okay, right, exactly. I hadn't thought about that.
We, we wanted to show you tonight, just if you were gonna do a sidewalk or whatever, we would pin it as to this design.
So we don't do a sidewalk until we approve the preliminary.
But if we're gonna approve the horse track and they're changing it. It's almost like maybe you should change it first and let's do it once.
Yeah.
That, that was my thought.
Let's do it now, uh, definitely.
Having gotten this and looked over and reviewed his packet last week and this week. I like this.
Oh, no, it's, it's a very good job.
Presenting us with a little bit of chicken scratching going. Looking at it going, okay. Just minor things that have to be done.
I just, I mean, running a business in town, our taxes are high enough over in Dayton and. I sit there and I say, why are they so high? And then our school takes up ninety percent of our budget. And I'm like, this is not putting any kids in that school system, so, and it's straight money to the town. And hopefully we bring businesses to the town, which essentially is going to make the town stronger. That's what I'm hoping for.
Minimal impact on goods and services. While attracting people to our wonderful little municipality.
Yeah, we're happy to give you the revised. We just wanted to make sure, just big picture, if there was any other things that they needed to add.
So should we? Wait till the next meeting for the revised and move forward with that? Because if we go through with it now, we're gonna have to do it all again.
Exactly, like.
I'm not trying to put you off. Let's make this go smooth.
I mean, you have more experience.
Yeah, what's the process after that? You wanna have, you wanna submit the revised plans? Would you do a sidewalk?
Well, we're gonna go through and make sure we have all the paperwork that we need with all, and all the stuff that we have to have. Then we'll schedule a sidewalk, then we have a public hearing. When we come back and try to wrap it up. Usually, and we discuss it, but usually.
If everything is, if all the ducks are in a row and all the paperwork is complete. Which cursory it looks like on the site plan checklist and everything presented. Uh, without having gone through each and every item, it looks like it is a very thorough application that once. You cement your plans, come in, two weeks, once it's done, we schedule a sidewalk. We get out there, we walk it, all hundreds of people from the municipality show up and down.
I'll have donuts and coffee.
You know, they go there, they look at what you propose, you explain to them. We come in, we have a public hearing, which you present your proposed plan to the public. They can approach us and say, I want the building green. Or they have a valid reason for disliking it, or they say, hey, it's a great idea, we're fully in support of it. We close the public hearing, we go back, we review everything on the checklist, we take it to consideration. We, public remarks, and they can submit the remarks to us in writing, which has happened. You know, someone's. Can't make it, they got a wedding or whatever. They'll send us a comment, we'll read it to make sure that their concerns are addressed. Once everything, all the concerns are addressed. Pros and cons, if the board feels that everything is done complete, all the criteria are met, we go through the checklist. We vote yea or nay. After that, it's done, we write up a noted, notice of decision and it is sent out.
So, alright, so first, this is considered a null and void meeting at this point then? Because I haven't submitted the current plan or the new plan?
It'd be, I would consider it a preliminary inquisition question. What are we looking for? What will we accept? What will we not accept? Is that what you're looking?
So what, what I'm proposing is, what I'm asking is, plain and simple. This plan has differentiated by about forty feet. By sliding one building in, that's all we did to change, get rid of the middle. So is it something we can move forward if I bring these plans to you tomorrow? We'll say, like, if I drop them off here and I drop them in their office tomorrow morning, this is, it's not, I'm just trying to save us another two weeks. Right, and if we can move forward, and I, I know it's a long shot, but maybe.
Yes, it's, yeah.
In, in my opinion, the preliminary, um, identifies whether all the pieces are in place. Whether you submitted the deed and all of the stuff.
Okay.
There's an expectation that there's going to be changes because the project's gonna be discussed, you can have public input or whatever. But I, to me, we could vote on this to preliminary, that their preliminary submission is complete. Because I don't see anything that would be missing other than, um, they've even documented where.
Or where all the. Yeah, everything is.
I mean, usually we have to talk about that, but you've already, uh, explained why.
I didn't wanna give the wrong thrown out, so I think.
Thank you. I'm giving him the credit.
Yes.
So if we go by following the same steps as say a subdivision. They bring a preliminary plan in. We go through the steps, that would be this, this is their preliminary plan. We set the sidewalk. We set a public hearing. They submit a final plan. Why can't we set a sidewalk tonight? Why can't we set a public hearing date tonight? At the next meeting. Could he have the forty feet or whatever from his other building?
That's right, cause previously there was changes made after the public, after the sidewalk.
Yes, there could be changes made after the sidewalk, there could be changes made after the public hearing.
But after, the last one after the, after the public sidewalk. Remember we said no, changed it so that they had to come back with the amended plan.
But if, at this point, the first date that he could have a sidewalk would be probably the twenty-first of June. Or the twenty-eighth. The next meeting is the eighteenth of June. So in all reality, he could have the plans on the eighteenth, which would be uploaded at some point.
For the, before the sidewalk.
Potentially before the sidewalk. Or be available in the code offices. Not, not trying to put this or.
Yeah, but would I have to come back on the eighteenth? And it doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying, I need to know if I.
You, you would have to come, but that depends on if they would wanna do the checklist today or do the checklist on. The enrollment application.
I'm happy to do the checklist today.
I as well. I mean, the plan is. Ninety-nine point nine percent complete with the change, with potential modification, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you find something tonight, then I can fix it by the.
We have two holidays coming up.
No.
Fourth of July is coming up. I don't remember seeing a butter rating. On the public hearing.
Yeah, I talked to Rebecca about that.
Okay.
We, we need to do it before the public hearing.
Yeah, well, I, they have to go up twenty days before the public hearing. So we have to think of dates.
So if we're at the eighteenth for the next meeting, sub, uh, sidewalk would be mine, twenty something?
Either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth.
And then?
The public hearing would probably be July sixteenth.
So there's our twenty days, so if we get it out in the next week or two, it would be before that.
Let me count. It would probably, just to be safe with the holidays, the sixteenth would be the public hearing, July sixteenth. The second meeting in July. Yeah, because we meet on the second.
Yeah, that's fine. We wanna check all those boxes.
Yeah, I'd rather get you ahead of the game and any changes or the inclusion of the, uh, butters list. Get that taken care of now.
Absolutely.
So, do we wanna set a sidewalk date?
Let's go through the checklist and then we'll. Then do that. Cause why waste acknowledging all this wonderful paperwork that we have? Yes, we do, okay. Eight, three, four, fee established by the Board of Selectmen, three hundred and fifty dollars provided separately. Have a motion that that has been submitted?
So moved.
Second, motion, second, any discussion? Approved.
Wait a minute, I was motioned.
Second.
Sorry.
Gotta be quick. Eight, three, five, C. Provide three, three sets of mailing labels for butters within five hundred feet of the property, including mailing address and map and lot number. To be provided. So we'll make that as a stipulation. Number one. A site plan drawn to scale not smaller than one inch equals forty feet. Right there, I believe it is. So I'll move that the applicant has met criteria for number one. Ten seconds, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Number two, name it. Oh, name and address of applicant, plus the names of proposed developments. So there's the applicant. And there's the name of the proposed development. You have a motion that he's met criteria two?
It's so moved.
Ten seconds, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Number three, total floor area, ground coverage, location of each proposed building, structure or addition. Notation says see site plans. Site plans are in front of us. We have a motion.
So this is based on this plan, the setbacks.
Correct. And they'll provide the revised one when they take out the horse track.
So the building's on the left, just gonna move over to the right.
That's it. Yep, that's it. It's literally taking that, that grass area out of the middle. It actually drops. We have less impervious surface by doing it that way. The building area stays the same though, yes, yeah.
Is that a motion, Kevin? Kevin motions? Ten seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, site plans have been presented. Firm in a survey of the parcel made and certified by a registered land surveyor licensed in Maine relating, relating to the reference point. Plan must show true magnet, true or magnetic north and graphic scale, corners of the parcel, date of the survey and total acreage. There's the setbacks. Yep, there's the survey, true magnetic north. I'll make motion the applicant has, uh, submitted number four.
Second.
Seal seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number five, all existing of. Number five, all existing of proposed setback dimensions, see site plans. Look at that right now, which is C two dash one, if I'm not mistaken. You have a motion?
So moved.
Seal, Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Closed, unanimous. Number six, site location, direction and intensity of illumination for all major outdoor lighting apparatuses and signs. See site plans. I believe that is. Except the handicap commercial building, eighty seven square feet. Is that on the plan that we can see without having to take out a little mic?
We're planning on doing all the wall packs on the building itself. So they'll point right down near the doors, so there'll be no streetlights or anything like that.
Where's the light pole?
That needs to be, and do you have the, to, 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 to lumine- lum- lum- illumination?
We didn't do, no, we did not do an illumination.
Yeah, we mentioned that too.
Okay, because we will need that as well as, uh, a directional, you know, the intensity, uh, the downward.
The photometric plan.
Yes. My tongue is not working properly.
It's okay.
So that will need to be provided. The plans will have to, you know. Because should be like. You know, one over every door and over the garage door. You don't want these big signs up there.
Right.
Blinding people coming on one eleven because. You want to flag. Yeah, you want to flag airplanes going into Sanford.
So, uh, not to throw a wrench in the picture here, but it, do, are we allowed to put illuminate, uh, an illuminated sign on one eleven with the businesses listed? Or is that something that's not?
That would be up to Rebecca, but it must fall under the sign design, sign design standards.
So that would have to be on, sign design standards, but that would have to be on the, on the photometric plan, right? Because if it was lit.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. So that you're not trying to recreate.
We talked about it, I didn't know as contractor space.
Yes, Rebecca.
Coming there to buy anything, you know, so. Okay, so we're not going to have.
Because we don't want the Citgo sign outside of Fenway Park.
That's gone. And then, so she said state approval, we're going, that's gone.
If you're out of the right ways, it required.
I think if it's off of a state road, they require it. If you're really out of the right way, I can't speak for them, but, um, I know that if it's on a state road, they.
The only thing I would need would be like a seventeen thirteen sign, right? So that if someone needs us something delivered or a fire chart needs to go there for some reason, we would need to know if seventeen thirteen turned into this parking lot, then they shouldn't be able to find the business.
Yeah, but that's, that's different than an advertising sign for the business, you're saying this is my address.
Correct, correct, and that's.
Probably can use a lighted sign for that.
Yeah.
And what were you saying on DOT or DEP for one eleven?
Just that they would, uh, if you're on a state road, they have to say about your sign.
I mean, we haven't had much problems with projects on one eleven.
No businesses have signs, I'm sure, I'm sure they approved.
Well, I mean, Jason, Jason Boyer's got a beautiful sign out there, right? With the log and everything else.
Yeah.
And I'll call him to find out how he did it.
Yeah.
Because it's just something like, how did he get approval for that? Because that's a big sign and it is beautiful. Not that I would do that for this project, but it wouldn't hurt to have Bob's Plumbing on, you know, a thing. It says seventeen thirteen on top, so that people know where to go, you know?
Yes, as long as it complies with the sign ordinance. I'm all good with it.
Okay.
Like I said, don't want the Citgo sign from Fenway Park, but.
Yeah, no, we won't have that.
Before we move on to the lighting, um, you don't have a standard on how many lumens are allowed off the parking lot. You just want to see the photometric.
I don't think we have a restriction.
I don't think we have a maximum illumination, it just has to be.
Basing down.
Down and not going to spread.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't blind the neighbors.
Exactly, you know, don't be of such a white intensity that it reminds you of the new vehicle coming down the road.
Yeah.
No, that's good.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we don't have a copy readily available of the previous plan that we've had.
We'll have, we have a guy.
Yeah, I mean.
We have a person.
It's standard like.
Especially with wall packs, if it was, if it was lighting out here, you know, on a parking lot lighting poles, it'd be different, but wall packs are easy.
Yeah.
We are showing one hole at the office.
Yes.
Yeah, and you will need to show the illumination and everything like that, just like if you have a backup generator. We'll need to know the decibel level, location of, you know, the fuel storage and all that.
No one's living there.
Okay, so intentional illumination is, uh, will be to be provided. Agreed?
Yeah, yes.
Number seven, type, size, location of all incineration devices, and they are stating not applicable. Uh, did you provide a waiver stating that you're not going to be here? Because one of the things, if you're asking something that's not needed, we request a waiver application. A waiver, could be one simple sentence saying that there's no plans for the, the project to have any type of incineration devices.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Just.
Can guarantee that.
So if someone says, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they see a fire pit, well, the guy's cooking hot dog, it's not an incineration device, it is a.
Right.
So to be provided. Number eight. The type, size, location of all machinery likely to generate appreciable noise at the lot lines as well as estimated decibel level at property lines. Again, that's one of those.
I was going to say, is that something you're probably going to have as a part of a package that says your occupants? By the way.
Absolutely.
You know, no hot rod roasters.
Yeah, yeah.
At ten o'clock at night, you know?
We're not letting a mechanic shop in there.
Okay.
I can guarantee you that. Uh, I don't want oil, I don't want fifteen cars sitting out there half apart. I'm all set with that, clean, neat.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, uh, we have a rental agreement we use on our residential side. We're, we actually have a lawyer working on it right now to switch it to more, modify it to commercial. It's going to be, I can't list who could go in there, right? I, I can't put it on a list because you don't know what someone's business would, might take them. But it's going to be very low impact and they, they, there's not going to be any spread of their business, meaning outside parking, things outside, that's what the whole gravel parking lot's about. Put it behind a fence and hide it. We're even talking about putting in like a, a grit, a green screen type thing in front of the fence so you can't see what's in it. Surveillance cameras all the way around, that type of stuff. So just so if a plumber leaves something in there, a trailer, an auxiliary trailer, and something happens to it, we can go back and find out what happened and why, and then trace it back. Because the people in that pen should be the tenants if they're paying for that space.
Yeah.
So it'll very, it'll shrink the people that could be in that fence, hopefully.
Good control.
Because there can be some very diverse tenants in there.
Absolutely, and.
Which is kind of what you want.
We do, we want businesses to be able to work off of each other, right? If you have a tech stop, if you have a person that's doing, uh, screen printing, making shirts, and there's, there's, you know, ten other contractors in there. Eventually someone's going to walk over to that and say, do you think you can print some shirts? That's kind of what I'm hoping for. We all need each other in the business world to keep things going, so.
That's fine, okay.
Trying to make a little. You know, community out of it.
How does the board want to approach number eight?
Uh, well, um, that could be a waiver also.
It should be a waiver, yeah.
A waiver, and then you can explain in your waiver that, you know, you're.
At least your agreements will require X.
Yeah, just so you're going to control the noise, period.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that is a to be provided as a waiver. Number nine. Location, type, size of all existing or proposed catch basin, storm drains, facilities, wetland streams and water courses, as well as all utilities both above and below ground, see site plans. And I'm seeing wetland radiations and photography.
Above the utilities.
Said it was having a pool. And everything after that will be underground, I presume?
Power, everything, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, we'll have to run, uh, you see with the, in the upper corner, there'll be a leach field up there, it's the gravel parking area. That will, that's uphill, it's a pretty flat lot, there's not much of a grade difference in that, in that piece of land, so. We're going to, um, all six units in each building will funnel to one septic tank. So each building will have its own septic tank and pump to pump the affluent water uphill to that, that bed. So everything will be underground.
Proposed catch basins. When you get rid of the, uh.
When we get rid of the horseshoe, the horse track, the, there'll be a line of catch basins, a few catch basins down the middle of that paved area.
Yep.
To catch all the water. So each building will slope away from the garage doors to the center of the parking lot. Everything will catch and then go, I'm assuming go underground to the pond, because we have to cross all that, so.
Right, and then you get the backside, because that will need to be shown on, on the plan.
Yep. So once you, yeah.
What's, what's the length of those buildings, a hundred and?
Two oh four.
Yeah, that's a lot of water coming off on a twenty foot slope.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, there's a drainage and drainage plant after that.
Yeah. Oh, there is.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a. There's a drainage point here.
Yeah.
So we'll need the catch basins on the revised plan. We got the storm drainage facilities, wetland delineation, water courses. Anything other than the catch basins that you guys see?
Utilities, above and below. See light pole, install utility pole, okay.
Where's that one?
Up to the C two four.
C two four. That's going to have a septic, there's a light pole. Pad mode transfermer, so this is going to be good.
Utility pole right by your.
The pole is because the power is on the other side of one eleven.
Yeah.
We have to cross one eleven and then drop underground. Into the project.
There's another septic tank pump station. Proximal location of the well. Then septic tank, and then there's a septic field. Only thing I'm thinking about is the catch basins.
Right.
Comments, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So it'd be subject to the location, catch basins on plan.
Right, so I moved that the applicant, uh, fulfills the requirements number nine except for catch basins, and you'll provide that.
That would be on the revised plan.
Yeah.
Got a motion from Cecile, second by Bill, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved, subject to the location of the catch basins on the plan. Number ten. All existing contours, proposed finished grade elevation of the, of the portions of the sites which will be altered and the system of drainage proposed to be constructed. Contour levels shall be specified by the planning board, and we have them, I think it is. C two two and C two three. That's erosion control is C two three. C two two is grading and drainage plan. I'll make a motion the applicant has per, submitted for number ten. Ten seconds, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Number eleven. Type, location, size of all curb, sidewalks, driveways, fences retaining laws, parking space error and layout thereof, together with dimensions. I believe. That is site plans, that is driveway, paving, parking. That is your handicap. Typical trenching. That is your drainage.
C two point one has.
Two point one is all that?
Has all the.
I need a bigger one of these.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's the, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Ten motions, and we have a second? All second, any discussion? All in favor the applicant has met the criteria for number eleven? All opposed? Unanimous.
One question I did have, uh, you guys speak to a minimum of twenty-five, twenty-six foot bit between the, you know, side of parking. At the office right now, we're showing twenty-four, do we officially have to ask for a waiver or just make that twenty-six?
Ooh.
Say that again.
The, uh, the width of the, you know, the, the drive-through lanes. It says a minimum of twenty-six feet in your ordinance.
In the ordinance, and you've got them at twenty-four.
We can make it twenty-six.
I was going to say, on the right-hand side, I'm seeing twenty-six, I was not seeing in notation. On the left-hand side, the office building, I was seeing a notation of twenty-four. How difficult would it be to bring it up to twenty-six?
So the parking spots are twenty feet deep. And then you have a forty-foot travel lane between the two big buildings. So that's exceeding the twenty-six foot minimum. On the office space, there's a twenty-foot parking spot, but only a twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot travel lane. So we're going to, I think that's twenty-six is what you're saying?
We can, I mean, a lot of towns want to reduce impervious, so they're going to twenty, twenty-two now. You guys had requirement for the twenty-six, they can make whatever, if it's enough, we need to ask for an official waiver.
I'm just thinking of going into parking spaces with my full-bit pickup trucking.
Right, the more room, the better.
Yeah.
We have room in, in Pervias though, right? And so, yeah, we'll just make it twenty-six.
Twenty-six and comply.
What's a little more pavement, you know?
Long as you don't have to do that.
Yeah, the mowing.
Those, no, 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 the pavement lets the water go through it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It may be cheaper to put in, but you're going to pay for it every year.
Oh, my God. Some projects with that right now.
We work on them too, and they're awful.
All right.
Yep.
Try to, try to plow it, you can't put sand on it, can't put salt. What do you want me to do?
Yep. All right, number twelve.
So, eleven, did we vote on eleven?
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
It was unanimous, but then there was a question, which is legal to come back and ask questions on a previously made motion, if it is within the same meeting. Any more further questions? Okay, we're good. Number twelve, all proposed landscape area size and type of plant material upon premise waiver requested for landscape plan. And we have that waiver handy?
No, no, no official.
No official?
Yeah.
We, we want to discuss that with you.
Okay, yeah.
These are going to be a requirement for any landscaping. Brian was thinking just over grass.
Sounds like you have a plan already.
Yep, it's grass.
Yeah, we'll just do stone drip lines so we don't have the splash, mud splashing up on the building, keep it clean, right? And then no gutters, because that's a maintenance nightmare. Uh, on the metal roofing, the metal roof on the top, on the front, we're going to put the clips to stop the snow from sliding.
Snow jacks.
Snow jacks, there you go. So we're going to put all that across the front of the building to stop any preventative, you know, we'll have some signs, you know, in the front saying caution, possible snow falling, blah, 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 which, another reason why we're pushing everyone out six feet, eight feet away from the building. Plantings wise, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on doing any, maybe, maybe on the gable end of the building, facing one eleven, a, a shrub or two, but I don't know, I rip them out normally. So people have me rip them out with an excavator, I don't put them in. So grass, grass is where that.
Historical advice. Building, I would strongly suggest gutters. Not your residential, five by six. There is a tremendous amount of water that can come shooting off that, which without gutter systems will rapidly erode three, four feet away.
Yeah. Yeah, makes sense, that's a big building.
I would suggest, you know, going through several industrial parks, looking at the building, Saco Industrial Park.
Yeah.
I've built a lot of those buildings.
Yeah.
And you'll see our, our big gutters.
Yeah.
You know, they're not this big, they're this big, we're, down's about this big.
Yeah, that's true, because a lot of the buildings we do, we install gutter drains. Yeah, that's true, because a lot of the buildings we do, we install gutter drains under the ground.
And it will allow you to, particularly on the front side parking lot side, to direct water discharge toward, closer to your. Catch basins.
Yeah. Okay.
And you could even have it so that you do underground, so it drops underground.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend it, I still went to time freezing it up.
Yeah.
But.
Yep.
On the backside, we were gonna use a riverbed, just like a crush dome.
Yeah.
So it doesn't erode the grass.
Yeah.
Yep, because that's a tremendous amount of water coming on. So. Just a simple one line, we only plan on having, yes Rebecca, just dying, you need a cough drop? Uh, a little one sentence, you know, the only landscaping we are proposing is planting grass. Simple as that, you know, I don't care, now if you were planting azaleas and all this other good stuff and shrubberies and. So pending waiver. Make a motion that we receive a written waiver.
Yes, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Number eleven, all existing proposed right of ways, easements, and other legal restrictions which may affect premises in question. Statement not applicable, I tend to agree it's not applicable, because you are using an existing roadway, you. Write title and everything else to it, you're not crossing anyone else's property, no one's crossing yours. Do we have a copy of the deed? Did you own it? I see it right here.
I hope I do.
Yep.
Well, actually, I don't, but.
What you own, she owns, what she owns, she owns.
You're wrong. What I own, she owns.
Yep, and then what she owns, she owns.
And we did get a letter of authorization from her, allowing him to speak.
I'll motion, make a motion that number thirteen is not applicable.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second, any discussion on number thirteen? Here are no discussion, all in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Number fourteen. The property lines, yeah, the property lines of all properties are budding the proposed development, including properties across the street. Or across a water body, together with a tax map, lot and numbers, and the property owner's names and mailing addresses on file with the town. Office within ten days of the filing of the application, see plan. Which part of the plan are we seeing this? Okay, we got butters here. That we're not seeing them, am I seeing them across the street?
Nope.
Okay, that is.
Yeah, the survey, the stamp boundary plan has all the butters except, you never put one on across the street.
Okay, we do need that. Sorry to be the, but it's.
Yep.
There. Other than that, I'm, I saw that.
It's, yeah, this plan.
It's the second page.
Yep.
We'll get survey and all that, but we do need the ones across the street, uh, just as if it was across the lake. So, subject to across the street. I'll make motion that the site plan has been presented with the exception of the notation of the owner located across the street.
Yep.
Tim second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that'll be a subject two, quick little.
Easy.
Easy peasy. Number fifteen, the appropriate blocks on each page of the plans for the sign, signature of the planning board. So that's a motion in Bill's second, Cecile's motion, Bill's second, versus vice, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number sixteen, document a right title or interest in the proposed site that was previously asked. Asked and provided. Did you see that?
Yeah.
Like warranty deed, okay, that's motion Bill?
Yep.
I'll second it, any discussion on right title of interest? Here are none, all in favor? All opposed, unanimous. Number seventeen. An onsite investigation report by the main state licensed site evaluator, the report shall identify the type of soil location of the test pits and proposed. Location and design of the subsurface system, see attached HHE two hundred attachment five. Which is in this wonderful packet. Project narrative. I did see that.
Yeah, that's right there.
That motion, Tim?
Yep.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Cecile second, any discussion? All in favor? Approved, unanimous.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the signature blocks, on the final plans, do you want those on every sheet, you sign every sheet?
I believe in history, historically, we've only signed the first preliminary sheet.
Yeah, the first one.
That's what I thought, so.
Yeah.
I put them on every one, because it's.
Yeah, yeah. No, because otherwise our signatures after so many would get, we use an auto pen. Oh, let's go on, composure, 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 drink of water. That was a good one. The number eighteen, the type of any raw finished waste material to be stored inside or outside of a roof building, including. Their physical chemical properties if appropriate. You say not applicable, kinda tough to say not applicable if you don't know who your tenants are gonna be.
I'll make sure I know who they are before I move in.
There'll be something in there.
There'll be something in their writing, in the descriptions of the, and I'll bring that up to the lawyer that's writing this contract, so that they understand. You know, if I do catch that or see it or any reason, then we'll have to move that material out of there. That's the beauty about commercial, I can walk in at any time to that unit with residential I can.
You happen to mention a screen printer, so, yeah, they have, it could be the empty paint buckets or toning buckets, uh. I'm just thinking back to Wyndham Industrial, they have a candle maker up there, you know, so it would be. Oh, did I see a location for dumpsters on that plan?
It's at the end of the building.
Okay.
It'll be there, there'll be a corral, concrete slab, two dumpsters.
Okay, yeah, because that's one thing, I mean. It's kinda hard with a commercial building where the tenant's unknown, just kinda threw out two different examples of potential. Raw finished, unfinished materials. How do we handle that? He does not know his.
He doesn't know, right?
Well, it's, it's just gonna be your responsibility to, to make sure you cover that.
Absolutely.
We put a notation on the cover page, saying tenants.
It could be a condition on the notice of decision.
I think it should.
Yeah, that, um, the, that you'd be responsible for.
I mean, there's thousands of potential clients in there.
Of course.
And.
Yeah.
I'm just. Like even a plumbing truck, you know, you got the pipe go.
Yeah.
That's potentially hazardous, and the guy gets done with the truck, ah, it's c stop, it froze up whatever, stuck, froze up dumpster. It's a little hazardous if you use it.
Once again, though, how, how can? I can put it in the lease, I can enforce it because it's in the lease. Right?
Can it be responsible for the management disposal of well potentially hazardous material, not to be thrown in the dumpster?
Correct.
I mean, they're.
That would cover it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, but at the end of the day, I need to cover myself too, because if there was a chemical issue or fire or something like that, where do we go?
Who's, you know? I mean, they're obviously gonna store some raw materials.
Yeah, correct.
Your lease to make stipulate that.
Yep.
They got some potentially flammable.
Boily rags.
Something that they will be stored in an appropriate. Locked, bright yellow.
Yep.
Safe.
Yep.
Lease stipulations. Subject to lease stipulations.
Would this be a waiver? Would this be a waiver? Um, and then if the applicant writes. Writes the waiver, it'll be stored, it'll be stored with the documents, but you would assume responsibility to make sure that dangerous.
Input Rebecca? Just standing? Yeah, that, that's a tough one in your situation, because you don't know.
I'm, I'm still on the fence on how I'm going to handle the dumpster situation, because ultimately, I'd like to have twelve individual dumpsters, because each person. Will have their own dumpster, so you see what I'm saying, because now you got people bringing things in from their home, or they're this, and they fill the dumpster on Monday. And the whole facilities, you know.
You're right.
I'm, I'm, we're not working through that, I have a meeting with Casella on a, for a different job. Uh, for a demolition job down a bit of the pool, and I'm gonna talk to him about the best option, because I'm assuming they deal with this all the time, so. Someone could have a better option than I do.
It's a good.
I was thinking two, like six yard tip up dumpsters, but.
It, it may be unofficial to have a cardboard dumpster that's recycled.
Well, once again, I'm gonna let them. I'm, I'm hoping that if I approach Casella, they can explain that to me and say, yeah, this is going to be the best scenario for your situation. Yeah.
Probably give you credits.
Right, right, so.
And that would require, I was gonna say, some of the ones I've seen is they have a back door where each unit has. Their own individual four, six yard little dumpster blocks.
Yeah.
That's creating more hassle for you.
Yeah, they would end up being in one corral area out there, and the dumpster guy would open up and individually dump. Unit one, two, three, four, five, you know.
Yeah.
But that's twelve individual dumpsters, twelve individual, like, there, there's a better solution, there's, there has to be, because I mean, how many.
Because if a seller would, would, yeah.
They'll, they'll know, I, I'm, I'm gonna let them handle that, I'm actually hoping to get a contract with them to just handle the trash part of it. So if they have to come twice a week, it's not on me anymore.
Then if they find illegal material in their dumpster, they can step up and go.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, I'm still working those details out, and I'll do that this week with Bill out there.
So how do we word this?
Well, this could be a condition too, I think you'll have a solution.
Yeah.
But, you know, so we'll just, just, um, put a condition on you that you'll provide documentation.
Bill Bennett.
Yep.
From Casella Pine Tree.
He's a good guy.
He does all my demo.
So how do you wanna word that?
He's a really good guy. He's a really good guy.
So, yeah, I'm, I guess I'll make a motion that the applicant will comply with number eighteen. With the condition that he documents a plan.
With a forthcoming plan.
A forthcoming plan.
Yeah.
On how waste will be handled.
Absolutely, perfect. Yep.
There, so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion to provide disposal plan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Glad we're getting this out of the way today.
Me too.
So that you can jump on it and.
Yeah, that's, I like to move forward.
Okay, number nineteen, traffic plan, the planning board may require that the applicant include a traffic engineering study. Should the project be considered one of substantial magnitude along with any other town's state highways. Where fast moving traffic occurs, i.e. Route one eleven thirty five four five. Should a traffic study be requested by the planning board, the following data shall be included. The estimated tree, peak traffic. The estimated treat. Yeah, treat power, yeah, peak trap hour traffic to be generated by the proposal. Estimating. Exist. Hey, misfired expression, my tongue is getting sore. Existing traffic count and volumes on surrounding roads. Traffic accident data for the last three years. The capacity of the surrounding roads, municipal facilities, parking, and any other improvement. Which may be necessary on such roads and facilities to accommodate anticipated traffic generation. A need for traffic signal and, so, traffic signals and sign or other directional markers to regulate anticipated traffic. See attached traffic summary, attachment four.
It's a summary. Pending. The DOT permit from.
Yeah, so what I did was I summarized, we actually.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, the DOT, the DOT probably has a very recent traffic study from one eleven. Kinnaman Pond Road and Day Road.
Yeah, we had a few conversations with them extended.
Because.
And they had volumes, they had already done trip counts out there.
Yeah.
We did capacity level service, trip safety. We came out, we did the site distance driveway separation, so we have the M D O T permit. I wanted to get the permit in hand before we approached you guys, because if I can't get a driveway opening.
Yeah, and from what I understand, there. Will be a new traffic light at that intersection in the near future.
We heard that was coming.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So I summarized part of what you missed.
Attachment four.
Ninety page report, and it went through, um, the driveway permit guy out of the southern region office, but he also dealt with. The southern traffic management media. And that is now recording the registry area.
So. I'll make a motion that the planning board does not require a new, brand new study, that we rely upon the current data available from. What is main DOT?
Yep.
As well as the information provided by the applicant. Bill seconds, any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed, presented and approved. Number twenty, that gave me a little bit of time. Any other information or data the planning board determines is necessary to demonstrate compliance with town, state, federal regulations, will be provided as required.
I can't think of anything else to put you clear.
There was lighting, there was the catch basins. You're gonna put perimeter fencing around there, you're gonna have security systems up? Yes.
My only question, might not be related to number twenty, is, uh, for the, as we move towards the N O D. What are we reviewing this under?
I believe that was commercial two.
Okay, commercial facility two, how about commercial outside storage as well?
That would also be applied if he's using the back gravel area. Which page are we on?
As part of just the tenants, or if you're gonna rent to the public as well?
My plan would be to rent to the public eventually, but I need to see how my tenants, how much space they need first, right? So, once the project is built and we're underway and we're rented, it's probably gonna be years before we would even look at that, you know? I wanna make sure they're taken care of.
I just wanna make sure that it's covered, what you're doing is covered under.
Yeah.
And you don't have to come back to us or something like that.
I would say at this point, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna just keep it for the tenants at this point, and if we do end up going outside, we'll come back. Because I don't, I don't want the liability, to be honest with you.
Yeah, then you're talking security gates and codes and everything else and.
More traffic, which I don't want.
People bringing in their boats or whatever, full of petroleum products and hazardous material or abandoning. They had closed storage trailer that, they probably, you know. Yeah, should not have stored at your facility. Work related relaxation.
Yes, exactly.
Bring out another thousand.
Yeah.
But if you put that on your request, on your application, we could still approve it, doesn't mean you have to. Put it out to the public, right, and you wouldn't have to come back.
Okay.
I'm gonna, what do you think?
Ask in advance and not utilize versus coming back and going, and zoning may have, may change, and they say no outside storage facilities, and then you're like. I should be grandfather.
So let's go for both of them then, I guess, well, it's, it is, what is it, multiple zone, or whatever they call it?
It's the same commercial sound.
The zoning, so.
What we're under for the site plan review, it's commercial facility number two, I guess. So should we add that, that it's outdoor storage?
Yes.
Yes, it's a commercial storage. Commercial storage.
Commercial outdoor storage.
Commercial outdoor storage.
That's the second use.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's approved for that zone, so.
Yeah. Again, better to ask.
Yeah, and let's get it all over.
You won't have to.
There's a little ice cream stand there, you know, because during the summer, there's all these motorcycles traveling back and forth going to Bentley's or wherever.
It's gonna see my trip count. DOT, I can't do that.
The other thing under that category is we need a state MDP program. We need to store more. So we'll be submitting that.
Oh, that's right. So that's for number 20. Looking for a DEP permit. So that's a condition.
If we don't have that permit by the time we get final approval on this, can you condition the permit?
Yes. Yeah, because you won't be able to get started without the sign off. So it's best interest everyone to just.
They are very delayed on their processes.
No.
Yeah, that's what we've heard. Been like that for a long time.
Find that hard to believe. Okay.
So number 20, vote on number 20.
Is that a motion to.
Motion.
Require DEP stormwater permits and such?
Yeah, we have the only other information.
I'll second that requirement stipulation. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor of requiring the stormwater, DEP stormwater?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, review standards. Good grief. The only 16 more to go.
No, no, that's the final.
That's right. We only go through that afterwards.
That's, that's the last one.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here tonight.
Each one plays a very wonderful part.
Checks and balances.
Exactly. Certain things look this way, certain things look this way.
It's okay.
This rattled old brain has a hard enough time going through all these things, keeping content. Without them, I couldn't do anything. So do we want to set a site walk?
One thing I'll add is we put paragraphs with all of what I call your performance standards. They're the one true.
I saw that.
That was, there was some debate on, some of that language that you're asking for, favor language, was discussed in there, but we didn't provide an official.
Oh, no, if, I had forgotten that you would put that in there, but I do remember you seeing one, two, three, four, five, and I wish you would point that out.
I don't think it's an official. Document that says item number such and such, request a waiver and why, and the next one down, you can say for the next waiver. Just do a nice chronological, simple, it works very well.
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah.
Okay, I wish I had saw that.
Waiver number seven.
Where is that located?
Number seven, on the incineration devices. Oh, you wanted, it's a waiver because you're not gonna have them, so request a waiver on that one. And then number eight.
Yeah, because it's under project narrative, attachment one, project narrative. I know I had saw it and I was like, this is great. Every question is. You can't remember everything.
And then number 12, landscaping. I think those are the only three that I have anyway.
All right. Yes.
Those were the three that I had.
Are they? Okay.
So when do we want to set a site walk?
I'll be there at five tomorrow morning. You guys aren't doing anything.
Well, we need so much time to notify the public. It, it, it's always a basis. Sometimes absolutely no one.
Yeah.
Other times something, and we will have 20, 30 people show up.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know how it's gonna affect the public.
Do you want to do it on a Saturday morning? You know I'm not gonna be there.
I'll probably be out of town most next two Saturdays.
Are we going into July?
The 21st or the 28th?
Of July?
Of June.
Of June.
I can do either.
My calendar is free on the 21st right now.
I'm not, I'm gonna be away.
Kevin?
I'm good.
You can make it? I can make it? Bill can make it?
So quorum.
You can't make it?
No, I'll be out of town.
Which day? But that's a quorum.
The 21st. If we got three, we got a quorum.
Will you be able to make it?
Absolutely.
Saturday, June 21st at?
Nine o'clock.
9:00 AM? And then we want to do the public hearing for July 16th. So we have time to do the others?
Yes. June 21st.
That was 9:00 AM, right?
Correct.
Okay. And would you say you want a public hearing on July 16th?
July 16th.
Could we do the 28th by any chance? And the only reason why I ask is it's my birthday on the 16th, so we're supposed to be going away and I didn't even know about it. So it just wasn't a surprise, I guess. And I didn't even know about it.
He still doesn't know where.
I'm fine with the 28th.
For.
The sidewalk.
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 Oh, so we change it from the 21st to the 28th?
I'm asking if we can.
We can do that.
I might be, I can think, I can do that one too.
You can maybe do the 28th? Are you still, you're gone?
Yeah.
And you said the 16th for the public hearing?
You're gonna do the 28th? So we got four?
Yeah.
That gives us an option or if something happens and one backs out, because we need at least three people. So we will let you have your birthday.
Thank you. It's 40. I'll be turning 40, so.
He's a young.
Just a baby.
All right, and then the public hearing on?
July 16th.
5:30?
5:30.
I like that early. There we go.
So for the sidewalk, do you, you need the buildings, all, all pre-built instead?
Great question. Yes. Flagging posed from the road, you know, proposed driveway, proposed building, proposed septic, proposed well, proposed gravel area. That way there, if someone goes in, they walk in, they see the storage area, the gravel storage area, visual representation. That's not gonna be as bad as we think it's gonna be because it's gonna be up and over or, oh my God, that's gonna be hideous. It's visual references are great and we have required it on all big building projects.
It's easy. It's great stakes in Roman.
Yeah. I mean, we had one in the winter where the snow covered spray paint for the, for the parking. It was, we're not gonna require the spray paint for the parking. But just building location, building location, septic.
Yep.
So that the board and the public can go.
Yep.
Okay. Good question. Anything else that we have to come up?
I don't think so.
So when do you need to do the noticing for the public hearing?
They would have to go out in the mail by. I would need the labels by the 2030 June.
The sidewalk, how do you, how does, so anyone can show up for the sidewalk that's concerned about the project, how do they know?
It gets posted, it gets posted on the website. We put it on the bulletin board.
Okay.
The world has been notified tonight.
Yeah.
We may get someone from Uzbekistan.
Yeah.
I wanna know what's going on.
So when, I'm just taking note of the revised plans that we discussed. When do you need a revised set or is that for the public hearing? Is it one more meeting after July 16th?
We'll definitely need it at the public hearing.
Yes, because the public should see.
The finished proposed plan. And that way it gives you time to get all those hundreds of revision requests or comments that we asked about.
We'd actually should have it ahead of time, a couple of weeks ahead of time.
Right.
Because it needs to be put online.
So a few weeks ahead of the 16th.
So on the 28th, if I just bring some copies of that, revise that newer sketch. We'll bring that and we do the sidewalk.
What do you post online, a PDF? So if we can get the plan in a PDF, that would be great.
That's easy.
We will need some paper plans for here in the office.
Yep.
And you don't have to pass them over at the sidewalk. You don't have to pass the plan out at the sidewalk.
No, I won't, but it's for reference. If someone was asking what that meant.
If you have one at the sidewalk, which is great.
Okay.
I'll plan on having my little packet, understanding that there's gonna be the proposed changes.
Yep.
So that we can go, here this is.
Yep. Okay.
We never know who's gonna show up.
Yeah, it, it's fine.
Some of the times it's been there and they have picked apart a sidewalk, sidewalk and other times they kind of look at it and go, okay. We don't know. It's up to the public out there to put in their input.
Absolutely.
But that and next to the, the things that to be provided, which was six, seven, eight, nine, 12, the 12 was waived, 14. 18 was the one for, which will be the document for the hazard, oh no, raw finished or waste material to be stored inside. Just a plan saying that the leasehold, the leaser will be responsible for the security and that it does not produce any hazard.
I was thinking we'd just update the whole checklist with our revised set.
Yeah.
It's two weeks before the public hearing.
Like that. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
One other question, just in the future here for plans and what you guys want, is, are you gonna need to see anything else with the building?
The building is Rebecca.
Okay.
I'd love to say we have input. The only thing is that would fall under our purview would be the harmonious design, that you couldn't put up a god awful ugly.
Are you okay with the lookings of the work and the elevations we've given you or not?
Um.
Yeah, do we have a commercial building design?
Yes, we required that for because it, the last thing we wanted to do, I guess, on a prior project, prior to Cecile and I joined the board, there was a project that came before and it looked like every other building that this company has ever put up and you can see them from half, three quarters of a mile away and go, that's we didn't want that and we also didn't want to go as extreme as the McDonald's and Freeport.
Right.
But something with a little bit of.
Yeah. Modern look to it.
Yeah.
That was a recent addition.
You know, I'm, something as simple as, seeing as how you're gonna have the gable end on. Throw up a cubicle or something.
Yep.
You know, or just some little sight line.
Yeah. That's the thing with the front porches, I think they call them, they'll shed roofs over the front entryways. There's more, there's more design than what he had drawn on there in my mind as far as signage goes on the building above those and lighting and like the plan would be, the wall packs would be on the building, but I also was, I was thinking about doing possibly some recess lights in the softets along the whole building. They stay lit at night. So it's a real soft white light, but you can see the building from the road. But that's all, we're gonna talk about that in a photo later because.
Yeah, it's just a not a sterile cookie cutter.
Yeah.
Like you see on your, your strip walls, you know how they have just a little bit of architectural detail.
Yeah.
Jet's logo.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, I recognize that as by the building with this.
Yep.
Versus.
I get it.
All right.
There are some very basic commercial building standards.
Page?
And page 62 of the zoning ordinance.
It's section 10.23 of the zoning ordinance, the commercial design standards. So you can read through that.
Very basic.
Right.
Yeah.
And there again, I don't think we have to see that on our plans. I think that would be Rebecca that would.
We gave floor layout and foundation plans for the contracted units, but nothing for the office building. It's gonna be a pre-standard plan. I just wanted to make sure Ryan wasn't surprised if you requested.
Yeah, no.
That is something that falls under our purview, but it's, it's very basic, as you said. Just look at page 62. And it is section 10.23, commercial design standards. Okay, good question. Any other questions? All right, I think we are good for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Awesome presentation. Very well done and. That's my hot cup to see.
Thank you.
Not so bad.
Well, Paul's worked on it for about a year now, you're.
It shows that sections were looked at, things were thought out.
Yeah.
You know.
You gotta hire the right people. I was listening to the gentleman earlier talking about the suggestion of having a lawyer that deals with that stuff. I was like, man, he just needs to get that guy. I have a guy. I'm like, I'm like, you just gotta get that guy. You get the guy, it'll all flow. Don't worry here.
When things flow and you do the work, it works out.
Yep.
You know, thank you very much. Thank you too.
Happy birthday in advance.
I don't know if it's happy or boring.
Some of us hit a few years more than recently. All right. Click packet.
You know, it's like that wall we did last time, right? Like ready to sneak.
Mm-hmm, I like. Minor exceptions, it could have been done. I'm glad we just opted to go through it today. All right, now, Patrick Gagnon, notice of decision needs to be written. This was for Wilderness Way.
Yeah, I think he felt through the cracks. He called a couple of days ago.
Did he?
And I thought of it a couple of weeks ago and then kind of it went away and called and I said, oops.
Sheep dip.
I could have sworn we had, we had drawn one up for him.
I don't remember doing one.
No, I don't remember getting an email saying for either you or I to come down and sign it.
Right.
I don't, and I haven't had time to look for it over the past couple of days.
Rebecca, are you taking all her time?
No, she wasn't here. So I was, basically it was, do you guys remember writing one? Because I don't. And I put the notes, we had that checklist where the dates were all written.
Yeah.
I put that in there to kind of jog your memories and, and somebody wrote it at some point. I told him that I was sorry, but I think that he was kind of forgotten and if he could recall, we were very, very busy when he was here. And he said, absolutely, it's fine.
Okay.
And then I would let him know when it was ready.
Do we have a dynamic template for notice of decisions?
I always just take a previous one and fill it in. I, I think that Kevin said he did the same thing.
Yeah, I, I tried to do that for the meeting minutes. It did, the full 16 standards are, are in these minutes. I could have copied and pasted to the NOD.
Yeah, that's what I would do too.
In the, in the minutes that you just wrote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, put together part of a package with some of the standards to be able to do it as we're doing through with the wording and then you could print it. Here it is. It's all done.
All right.
So that as, it just needs, more needs to be done to finish it out and I wasn't quite sure where to go with it.
That's it, but it's in the works.
It is. It is in the works. When, when there's free time, which is usually winter.
You notice I was checking my watch? Yeah, okay, so yeah, so we gotta get that out. Cecile and I can come down and sign it almost anytime. Or I can sign it.
So what is the plan for that?
It's gotta get written up and we gotta sign it and get it over to him. Because it's past due and we apologize.
Yes, we do. I will, I'll give it a, I'll write it, but I'm gonna be gone for the, I'm not gonna be able to touch it until next week because I'm gone tomorrow through Sunday. Ta-da.
I can try and get it started in the next couple of days.
I can take a template, but I'll communicate with you. I need some template help. Um, okay.
Sounds like, too bad none of us is fluent with artificial intelligence and that.
I know.
Snap, is it Snapchat?
Snapchat. I haven't used it, but I'd be so much about it.
Neither have I, I just. Anyway, we will get that out to you as expeditiously as possible.
Uh, this is what, what else? I, um, um, this was his way even. This, this is the Dana Yangen, he did a garage for the state.
Mm-hmm.
For reference.
Perfect.
Oh, okay.
And you should have this. So.
Very good.
You want to, if you want, somebody wants to start with that?
Let me check that.
Um, I can actually email it to go through you.
All right, that'll be good.
Yep. That'll work.
So that's what I filed. I was like.
I know.
Okay, so that's going to get out. Let's move on to the minutes, review public and hearing and meeting minutes from June seventh, twenty twenty-five and June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Okay, we have the Town Alignment Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes, May seventh, twenty twenty-five. This was for Patrick Gagnon, Wilderness Way, which we're just talking about. And Danielle Makwa, Makwa, one thirty-five Shore Road. Anyone have any questions, comments, nitpicks, revisions?
No, I guess it looks fine to me.
Same here. You'll get to read it. Now move that the public hearing, planning board, public hearing for May seventh, twenty twenty-five be accepted.
Is written.
As.
So moved.
Written, and I just dropped something. We got second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approved, public hearing. Thank you very much.
That's Rebecca's mail.
Then we move on to the May seventh Planning Board, uh, meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, we just did May seventh.
That was the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
This is the regular meeting.
I moved.
We got a motion.
Been accepted.
Tim Sekes, any discussion on May seventh? Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. May seventh.
May twenty-first is still in the works.
I was going to say, you said June twenty-first and it's like, how can that be?
We're in the future.
Hey, I watched the Rocky Horror Picture Show. Time wore. So that was motion seconded and approved. Send that down to be signed. And we do not have the May twenty-first, which is still being drafted. So move that we put off the June twenty-first until the next stated meeting for the alignment planning board. Done. All business, anything new on hyper residential subdivision?
Not at this time.
All we're waiting for is the HOA documentation, isn't it?
Yes, and I need to reach out to them. I have a sticky note on my desk to do that and have not done it yet.
Does D E P need to?
That's right, I'm waiting for D E P.
Yeah, they're waiting for paperwork.
Kind of solo monitored.
Yeah.
Okay, it's nothing that we're doing that's holding them up. It's. Requirements beyond our control. Okay, then we have Danielle Makwa, one thirty-five Shore Road. We are waiting for the survey with the proper setbacks and everything else. And there was a question brought to our attention regarding the water flowage on the right side heading toward the water, determine whether it is seasonal or a uh, running spring. Remember, during a sidewalk?
Yeah. Uh, it was runoff.
But there was a letter that came in.
Right, yeah. The, there was a concern brought to the, I believe it was the D E P's attention. And so they needed to be a study done. Something outside of our purview. Yep, just close this up for Julie. So it just does not get lost. So that is, we're waiting on there to come back with the paperwork.
So you didn't see what's going on?
Yep. Carlisle Brooks Estates, preliminary application accepted, public hearing was held on five twenty-one. They presented the modifications to the plans going from six to five, changed the access from Carlisle Burke Road onto Walker Road. And we were just waiting for complete changes to come our way.
They should have that for next meeting, I believe they're supposed to be here at the next meeting.
Okay, then Justin Tharp, five ninety-two Walker Road, lot three, uh, map three, lot seventy-eight dash four subdivision addendum, land swap, public hearing is in next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Um, and they are hopefully looking into, see if there was any legal verbiage in the subdivision that was made that would prevent them from further modifying any boundaries. Cause they were not, they were not giving a plan, they were just exchanging it.
Right.
So they were waiting on them.
Right, one subdivision was.
That was, um.
Was affected by that.
Crystal Creek.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, I can actually remember that. All right, do we want to, I have been presented with a potential draft for the next planning board for June eighteenth. Um, please feel free to make suggestions if something needs to be changed or added. Draft for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M. Set with roll call, then we'll be having a public hearing on Justin Tharp, five ninety-two Walker Road, map three, lot seventy-eight dash four subdivision amendment, land swap. After the public hearing, then we will go roll into the regular meeting for Justin Tharp, five ninety-two Walker Road, map three, lot seventy-eight dash four subdivision amendment, land swap. After that, Ryan Dancause, seventeen thirteen Alphabet Road, map seven, lot sixty-four, which was the garden garage minimum that we just had here.
And I don't think he's coming back next week. I put him on there because I didn't know how far we would get today. And I wanted him to have a place on the agenda in case we needed him to come back next week, next meeting.
Do we want to leave that opening, but as that last item? In case they have questions? I mean, it, in my opinion, it was a very thorough application with just minor, minor commentary and requirements. We really can't do anything till after the site plan, sidewalk and the public hearing. They're presented, they're presented, they have everything.
No, but if they come in with all the changes and all the waivers.
With the final site plan.
We should, we should be able to clean that up and have it out of the way.
I think so too. And with the, uh, the catch patients, the lighting on the, on the plan, the, yeah, all that stuff. I want, yeah, let's leave them on. Send them a notification, if they have the documentation, then we'll go from site plan review or preliminary to final, to sidewalk, to public hearing. And proceed. Leave them on. Then we have Carlisle Brooks Estates, map four, lot twenty-two, preliminary application accepted, public hearing on five twenty-one, twenty-five, which we had.
He should have his final plan next time, I believe he said he was. Did he get his final plan? Or is, I don't believe in it. I have to check. We don't believe in it. That was a long time ago.
Yes, like last month or something.
Yeah, it was like.
Many tasks ago.
And were many, many tasks.
Yes.
Might have gotten that final plan? Or might not. We'll figure it out before.
Nope.
Okay.
And then we'll review the minutes. All business will go to hyper residential subdivision, tax map three, lot seventy, eighty-seven dash three and portion of tax map three, lot eighty-seven dash two, old Kennamuck Road nine, lot residential subdivision, which is the HOA. Now, one thing I got to bring up. The Planning Board bylaw review. Uh, the select board with the assistance of the town manager has went through and made some changes. Some I agree with, others I disagree with and with very good statute. So do we want to, A, either add this to the next agenda? B, have a workshop or C, see if we can't get and have a, uh, what are those called, Cecile? Joint meeting, uh, workshop.
Oh, a workshop.
With the planning board, uh, with the select board to discuss, uh, the revisions, because per the Maine Municipal Association Planning Board bylaws, it is the planning board that does the bylaws and is approved by the select board. How do we want to handle it? On the agenda, bring our own suggestions, revisions, commentary, set up a workshop or with the select board or set up our own workshop.
I, I haven't even looked at it yet, so I'd like to look at it.
My understanding, they voted to accept as is on Monday.
That's right. I, I, we've listened, I listened to the meeting and they, they've already voted and they said that we did not reply, that they, no comments had been, um, given to them.
They accepted what as is?
They changed the bylaws, they may change us to the document.
Well, I guess if it's accepted, we don't have to do anything.
Uh, yes, we do. Um.
Do you agree with the changes, Bill?
I am ready.
Okay.
I can give you a copy.
I did, I submitted documents, a list of comments that I have. This is a problem, a real problem, I feel, between planning board and select board. I mean, we're, the, the communication is not good at all.
All right. So in case the planning board didn't know, on Thursday, April twenty-seventh at nine A M, I was included in an email that was sent out to the select board. I have received the planning board byli, bylaws, which is on your agenda. Here is a copy of my notes. May ninth, after our meeting. Sent to myself and Rebecca. Please see the attached changes submitted to the select board. As a clarification, references to employees have been removed to prevent confusion regarding town manager supervisory responsibilities, which includes maintaining and updating all employee job descriptions, including responsibilities of the planning board clerk. The select board wanted to clarify this. If the planning board feels additional support is needed, or if there are any concerns or questions related to the planning board clerk duties, they are encouraged to reach out to the town manager directly. Additionally, the select board has revised the opening statement to present a more approachable term, tone. If the, this item is going to be on the select board agenda for further review approval. If you have any questions or feedback, please do not hesitate to reach out. This was after our last meeting, which is why at the last meeting I mentioned that we should start looking into this. So they took it upon themselves to, um, look at it, review, modify. I have opt, I have objection to that. Withstanding. This is from the Maine Municipal Association Planning Board by rules. Section five, boards committees, five point two, each board or committee shall elect a chairperson in, oh, that's uh, the correspondence secretary, its own membership, shall adopt bylaws to govern itself, subject to the approval of the board. Clear as day that the board adopts the bylaws to govern itself and then they are submitted for approval. Uh, another thing they wanted to do was remove the ability for executive session, which however is on Maine Municipal Association, page fifteen, executive session, and goes into explain a number of reasons why the chair, the board chair has the authority to do it.
You say why they wanted to remove that?
We have not went into executive session, so why do we need it? Cause it is always an option or to be available. Or call special meetings such as a workshop, which we have done in the past.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be executive session.
But it would also be calling a special meeting outside of the standard ones.
Yet they're removing the ability for you to call a workshop or to appoint a committee. So let's say you had some research that had to be done and you would ask a couple of planning board members, like two, two of us, to research some issue. Um, that would be a, you know, like a, a special, an offshoot committee. You don't have the, that, that's been removed.
Exactly. Uh, bylaws, rules, procedures. In the absence of the local ordinance, a charter provision, which the charter makes no mention of the bylaws for the planning board or any authority who gets to modify the bylaws. In the absence of the local ordinance or charter provisions, to the contrary, any administrative board, like the planning board, can and should adopt written bylaws to govern the non-substantial housekeeping of. Um, this is because the bylaws of this type are not the same as an ordinance, rewrite myself. And I won't go through that one, which is bylaws, bylaws. This is the one I was talking about, the planning board is often asked to take leading in preparing new ordinances, addendums, amendments, which is order of precedence, which is written down in the charter. Um, where's the other one? I've been spending time going through the whole Maine Municipal Association. Oh, uh, the other thing is on the opening statement, there was the typical one that's been for years. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions. They wanted a softer tone. Maine Municipal Association Planning Board, page thirty-two, making the decision, review checklist, reviewing evidence, number eight. However, has the applicant met his or her burden of proof, i.e. that the applicant presented all the evidence? Then basis of the board's decisions, general rule. Once the board has determined the scope of its authority and the applicant's burden of proof, it must, goes further on. It is, the decision must be based solely on whether the applicant has met his or her burden of proof. Going on. Then keeps going on, this is about the applications and everything else. The chairperson shall explain during the course of the discussion and approve findings and conclusions that if any board member thinks the applicant has not met his or her burden of proof, multiple times, multiple times, multiple times, standard documentation straight from the Maine Municipal Association Planning Board. Uh, the other one, and I kind of agree with it. Um, there was, yeah, they want to take out, the chair has the authority to appoint all committees and to call work sessions and to provide or to provide over executive sessions. That is a standard of ability, authority from almost any standing chairperson on a board.
And they want to remove that.
They want to remove it, very confusing. And then remove all correspondence uh, as listed above, is subject to the Maine open meeting laws and subject to F O W. That is straight from Maine Municipal, MMA, we'll leave it at that. Uh, we, that I agree with that one, that was no problem. Remove meeting at the elementary school, yep, get rid of that, that's fine. Uh, I believe that this goes with, what is it, table of? Oh, the notification table. Um, yes, it's confusing. We got to condense everything and make it uniform. I know, um, Don Herman put in a lot of work with that to get it, so it was all uniform. How that is to be adjusted, I don't know. How that is to be adjusted, I don't know. At least one working day before the scheduled meeting, yep, that can be referred to Committee Handbook. Oh, this was a good one. Uh, right at the beginning on 1.2. The board members are expected to review state and local regulations to become knowledgeable with the regulations, and we have, and with board policies and procedures. Want policies and procedures struck out and put bylaws. Uh, says remove tax policies, procedures developed by Town Manager Select Board. Now, this is a good one. If we remove board policies and procedures, that means that we are not responsible or liable to understand municipal policies and procedures. Therefore, the employee handbook that has been presented to us, which is a policy book, we are not responsible for understanding it, or to follow it, because we are not, you become knowledgeable. Does that make sense? That it could be worded differently, but to remove the responsibility for policies and procedures.
I think if you go back to the opening statement that we read here, um, I've always felt that it was choppy, jumped around, and was not very polite. It's always been my opinion.
Yep.
I went to the seminar, we went, I went with you to the seminar, and they went through that, and they said this all should be in your opening statement. And it's like, that's fine, but word it different. You know?
Yeah.
You know, and you're right, it's, it's the applicant's responsibility to present the evidence of whatever it is that they want to do. That's typical, I mean, I, I just, I always thought when you listen to the way it's read, it's like boom, one sentence. So it's a new paragraph, but it's the same paragraph. And it's the next, and it's like, why are you hitting me over the head? You know, you can say it politely.
I'm just, I have always seen, and probably you in your prior profession, burden of proof is a very common legal term that is used throughout many professions and many legal situations. And again, I guess there was, how many that I popped up in, this was just going, okay, burden of proof. We got most of that right from the MMA. So we're following their guidelines, their, some of their sample bylaws.
I, I don't find it a problem following their guidelines. I, my problem is the way it's worded, you know? I mean.
How would you word it? How would you say?
I don't know how I would word it, but you know, it's just, you know, you, you don't just come out and say, you gotta prove to me that you're right and we're wrong.
Like the judge in the courtroom.
Yeah, you're right, just do it politely. So you know, it's your responsibility to prove your case. Thank you, move on to the next thing, you know?
Well, if you've noticed, pass one, two, I've said it is incumbent upon the applicant.
Just to go on the, on the other stuff, and I haven't really read it to really get into it. But, uh, it looks to me like the board, the, the Town Manager and the board are taking all the responsibility. So if something's wrong, it's their problem, not ours.
It is ours because we are responsible for.
No, because they've told us that they're taking the responsibility, right? In the wording they put in there, I mean.
Did I, did you guys read the document that I submitted? Um, the section about bias?
Yes.
Now, that was recently added.
Right, we had.
And that was one of the last changes that we made to the bylaws, and we added that.
Very specifically.
Because there was an instance where a bias claim was made, and the, um, board member was never notified until at the meeting.
Blindsided.
And had no opportunity to, to have a defense. There was no notification.
Open public meeting and then.
And, um, so, um, we changed that, we added that in there to say, I mean, anyone, any applicant, anyone can have a bias claim. But to just speak it in a, without documentation, that's given to the victim to review, so they can defend themselves, I think so. Anyway, we added that, and I, they want to remove that.
Right, which would.
Well, I, I can remember back to when we had a fair hearing officer, and had no clue what the hearing was about, you know?
Which in that case, cause it took us, everyone in the board was blindsided. If we had known, we would have went into executive session, come in, executive session. Set forth the evidence, is there bias, is there not? Yes, no, made the decision.
I understand that they've accepted the policy as it is, or whatever you want to call it. But I don't think it would be inappropriate to respond back and say, you know, on this issue, we think this might need to be looked at again, uh, to see if maybe there's something other wording or change that would be more applicable.
But we haven't been given that opportunity. We should have had a joint session, to me, we should have had a joint session, a workshop with the Select Board. We should have been notified, and we could discuss the changes together.
From my perspective, coming into April saying, we need to do this, it's like, I don't have time. You know, you missed the whole boat I had all winter, you know, I missed the whole boat. Now, I don't have time to, I don't have time to sit down and read it.
And again, per MMA, it's the Planning Board. Precedent's 2022, there's Rottito's signature. 2023, there's Rottito's signature.
It's gonna be a turf battle, I don't know if anybody can.
So did my document ever get to the Select Board? Obviously not, because they probably would have mentioned.
I don't know, I didn't, I got it, I printed it.
And that's the other issue, is the way that we can, how do we communicate with them? We don't have a, we don't have a town email.
Don't go there.
So, I mean, we don't, there's no way to communicate with them.
Through the Town Manager.
That's right.
The Town Manager.
If you go by the Charter, the Town Manager is the go-between between the employees.
But we didn't get the revisions to the bylaws until Julie.
I didn't get them.
You, you, when you got them, you forwarded them to us.
No, I never got them.
I did.
You were the one that got them.
I never got any of them. I was not involved in any of it.
You didn't quite, okay.
If I had gotten them, I would have sent them to you, I would have printed them out, they would have been on an agenda.
That's right.
You would have known about them, but I never got any of them.
You didn't get any of that.
I knew nothing about it.
And one of the things, we should change the word. This is on 5-8-3. Currently, it says new applicants when deemed complete in accordance with the regulations by Code Enforcement Office and the board may be placed on the next available agenda. Uh, remove text Town Manager develop, wise. Town Manager Employees Job Description, Lemon Zone, so on, so on, so on. We have already with zoning ordinance, and I didn't write it down here. It is the somewhat review committee, which is the Code Enforcement Officer, the Fire Chief, and the Electrical Inspector, which is that committee, which per MMA should take a look at and review any application that goes, that is to be presented to the Planning Board before it ever gets to us. So we just gotta change the verbiage to the proper committee name. And it is 100%, we already have the, per the zoning ordinance, there is that position, which is the Code Enforcement, uh, Electrical and Fire Chief. We just gotta change it to Code Enforcement Officer, from that to this committee, which is what we've kind of been trying to do.
It's been doing, yeah.
To get a preliminary to assist the residents as much as possible, so that they don't get bogged down and delayed six months.
See, I think a lot of that's working, because we've had some good applicants come in with all the data.
Exactly.
Rebecca's been doing a great job with that. They come in with almost everything, pretty much, yeah.
I, I'll read, I'll read, I'll try to read it.
Actually, this is, this is a copy with the proposed changes.
Do you have a copy of those?
No, not a hard copy, I'd like to get one.
Actually.
Oh, okay, I saw that, I didn't see no.
I thought I emailed you guys with the proposed revisions.
Yes, we, I, we did get, we got, we got an email. Uh, from Kelly.
Send an email to me and PDF.
Oh, Rebecca sent them to us.
We should follow through, Kelly, but, um, I just grabbed it.
Okay, you sent it to us, sorry.
Actually, that's, yeah. You want, you want your.
Send me a PDF if you would, it's easier for me to read it.
And again, we don't have our own secure email, and most of you that are using Gmail are in violation of the Town Charter.
Do me a favor. Don't say this is not official business in the emails, because it is. Just don't say it.
I, I think I said that there was no, uh, no, it was a notification.
I, I know, but, you know. We've got a lot of emails in the past, like, this is not official, but this is not, it's official business.
We can't discuss it.
Look at it.
Don't discuss it.
We don't discuss it.
We don't discuss, I don't read it. See, I didn't read it, that's why.
You've got your sweep deck. No, no, hey.
You have your computers, Dad.
I know, I, I can't believe it, I've used it all day today.
Well, when you get your FOIA request, Bill, you have to do a search for, this is not official business, and you'll get all, you'll get all the stuff.
Well, that might be.
All the official, not official.
But if I miss a word, then I won't get it.
That'll be your tag. Your email tag.
Oh, my God.
Make your life so easy.
So how do we want to proceed with, I mean, cause we just adopted those in like November, December 24. Yes, there are some changes that I do believe are necessary.
I need to read it.
Yes, I only.
I need to read it.
And they're the same ones that were accepted.
It was November, December.
Two years ago.
The, the bylaws, yeah. Yeah, we hardly changed anything, I don't think we changed anything really, we was.
We added a couple because I believe that we had added with wonderful Dawn Herman, thank you so much. Uh, the, with a potential bias blood relationship of the applicant within six degrees, you know, the six degrees ta, separation.
But that was accepted, though.
That was the, that was the previous.
Right.
Years. Those were accepted.
Those were accepted.
The exact same ones.
Right.
Yep, now they want that completely removed, cause it's.
Right.
Provisions conflicts with municipal code of ethics. All ethical policies that are created outside the code of ethics shall be null and void, except for that table of saying, would be, maybe MMA.
Well, is, is there a policy on that? Does the town have a policy on that? If they have it spelled out.
Actually, I believe this one is more stringent than the municipalities. Actually, it gives the Maine Municipal Association Book of Page and Section, which is why we put it in, it said, here is the legal leg stand on.
Yeah, they didn't, their comment doesn't say this is referenced somewhere else.
It says all ethical policies that are created outside of the code of ethics shall be null and void.
I believe.
What does that mean?
I got an email this week from, from the Town Manager about new policy that they just put in.
New handbook.
Is it a handbook? And I have got to read that, I have not, I haven't, but I love it.
Well, you don't have to. Because we are striking out policies and procedures. Words are important.
You're right, words are important, probably an oversight. I, I, cause I, I need to read it, so that.
Please do, I mean, your past profession was all about strict adherence to, words are important.
Words are important, okay.
May, will, shall. All right, I have yapped way too long, but it needs to be, we can't just let it fall by the wayside.
So what, what are we doing?
If, if we all got a copy of the same documents to read, then I would think at next meeting we can discuss it.
We did.
You got a copy on the 9th like I did, correct?
Rebecca sent it to us.
Yeah.
Well, in my defense, I upgraded my Microsoft Windows, and all my emails were poof, everything. So it's like, I'm trying to go back now, because I have to log into Microsoft to get on my computer. It's like, no way, no way.
So let's put on the agenda, review bylaws, make recommendations. Um, and hopefully we can have a joint session with the Select Board to discuss our thoughts.
You need to send your email to the Town Manager.
I think we should discuss it first.
When you're ready, you need to be the one to send them. You can even come in and talk to her.
Oh, yeah.
But you need to be the one to request the session.
I can do that. I will do that. I got the shits done.
Okay.
So we'll have that on the agenda after Carlisle Brook, discussion on bylaws. And then we will set the agenda for July 2nd.
And?
What?
No, July 2nd?
I'm wondering how much we're gonna have before that, how many people, planning on taking a week off?
Hopefully it'll be a short week.
Um, I will, that will be my last meeting, next meeting.
The 7th.
My tenure's up.
Excuse me?
So the 18th.
June 30th, I'm done.
June 30th, so the 18th is your last meeting?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm out.
Do you want me to say that again? Excuse me?
Done.
She has served this community well for the last 11 years.
You want to leave your brain here? We can pick it for all the information you're gonna take away from us.
I mean, just tonight, how many times was it? There you go.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, um, almost 10 years, and I've been on.
It's been a little across.
Yeah, I'm.
Stick a fork in it.
Time to move on.
She wants to enjoy life with her husband.
I don't believe it.
She wants to say, honey.
It's about time.
Now that it's really difficult to go places.
Yeah.
I'm jealous.
We're gonna miss the hell out of you, obviously, without doubt.
And I mean, it, it doesn't, even if I wanted to stay, I mean, it's the end of my tenure, and you know what the process is. You have to, you have to reapply for employment, um, and I just haven't done that. So, um, my term has expired on June 30th. So hopefully, they have some other candidates in the, in the lineup, because you guys are gonna be really.
That's right, I forgot to mention this, this meeting. Any out there in the wide, wide world, if you are a resident of the town alignment and wish to participate in the ongoing of this absolutely magnificent municipality, please consider joining the Planning Board. We do have two current, currently, two alternative positions opening, so.
Yep, and, um.
And we will soon be having a full-time position open sadly. So consider the Leon application, thank you very much. And with that, I think I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Done.
Who's second?
I think I did. Bill made it, I second, looked over, I saw no one drooping their head and going, no, I want to argue and stay here.
Don't you want to stay? Don't you all want to stay?
We are gonna miss the hell out of you.
Yeah.